Good evening. This is the continuation of the Planning Commission meeting. It's May 8. We were in recess and we are now reconvened. I am Jim Lantelme, a member of the Planning Commission, and I am substituting right now for Chair Steinberger and Vice Chair Peterson, who will be here momentarily. Meanwhile, while we're waiting, we can go through some of the administrative things that we do before every one of our hybrid meetings. First off, tonight, we will consider the following items: ZOA 2024-03, an ordinance relating to large media screen with outdoor visual entertainment; second item is ZOA 2024-02, an ordinance relating to off-site parking; and third, PDSP Phase Development Site Plan Amendment to amend the Pentagon City Phase Development Site Plan. Before we begin, I'd like to share a few logistical points for all participants joining the meeting today, both remotely and in person. For presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and other electronic devices muted until you are called upon by the clerk. Please turn off the sound to any devices around you to minimize interference. Please keep your cameras off until the clerk announces your name to speak. When called upon, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is in the meeting command bar at the top of your screen. The moderator nor the clerk have the ability to unmute your mic. Once you have spoken, please mute your mics and turn off your camera. If you're dialing in by phone to join the meeting, press star six to unmute. Public speakers will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration and email confirmation to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. All speakers, both virtual and hybrid, will receive two minutes to comment as an individual. Only representatives of a county board-appointed advisory group, committee, and/or commission will receive three minutes to comment. A timer will be displayed on the screen if speaking virtually, and speakers in person will follow the timer stationed on the podium. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity, please reconnect by phone. However, if you're dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible 30-second warning to wrap up your comments. You will be then muted when your time has expired. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for further information. All public comments must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Tonight's meeting will be available for review through the YouTube and Microsoft Teams platforms in real time. The links have been provided on the Planning Commission's website. The meetings will also be available for review with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon Fios Channels 39 and 40, 24 hours to 48 hours after the adjournment of this meeting. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website via a link to YouTube as stated. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. And with that, my role is over, and I turn it back over to our Chair Steinberger.
Thanks, Mitch Lantelme. Apologies, I have a toddler who's going through an only mommy is acceptable phase. I'm sure he'll grow out of it when he's 20.
It was not a coup, I assure you.
No, that's okay. I would have accepted the coup, honestly, with the evening I'm having. He is now in a bath, everyone will be excited to know. And he'll be mortified at some point when I, you know, he looks at the recording. Oh, Mr. Clerk, please call our first item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Matt Pfeiffer with the Planning Division. I am filling in for Giselle this evening. Big shoes to fill, but I'll try to rise to the challenge. So the first evening tonight is actually item number four on the agenda is ZOA 2024-03, which is an ordinance relating to large media screens with outdoor visual entertainment. And we have Jill Hunger with CPHD here to provide a presentation. Thank you.
See if technology works for me. All right. So, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for having me this evening. As Mr. Pfeiffer pointed out, my name is Jill Hunger, and I work in CPHD. Tonight, I'll be speaking about the proposed zoning text amendment for outdoor visual entertainment for your consideration. Better? Okay. For your consideration this evening. So I wanted to do a little bit of ground setting here, and that our proposed zoning ordinance amendment is part of the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative, CMRI 2.0, which is continuation of the CMRI that was initiated by the county manager and authorized by the county board in 2022. CMRI is evaluating Arlington's development regulations and processes to ensure more nimble response to quickly evolving trends in commercial and real estate. Briefly, we are addressing increasing vacancies and declining valuations on both the demand and supply sides. Excuse me? The level of office vacancy reinforces the importance of these CMRI efforts in ensuring that any unnecessary barriers are removed to allow for market solutions that remain generally consistent with Arlington's overall plans, policies, and future vision. While the CMRI 1.0 focused exclusively on updates to the Arlington County zoning ordinance, CMRI 2.0 also includes multiple work streams centered around three areas of focus: redevelopment, which include the teardowns and reconstructions of entirely new buildings; conversion, converting an existing building to an adaptive reuse; and repositioning, then making significant investments in existing office buildings to upgrade their market competitiveness. The specific strategic goals under each of these include improving efficiency and cost of the redevelopment processes, streamlining processes for building repositioning, creating new processes for adaptive reuse, addressing regulatory relief tools for capturing tenant demand, and enhancing placement-making efforts. So there are numerous reasons of why this work is important to Arlington. So the, our tax rate with the residential and commercial tax bases, what the taxes mean, and if the commercial property tax revenue sees a decrease, there's a shift to the residential tax revenue, there's, you know, what happens to these services. But I think tonight, we're really going to be focusing on the place-making. And that strong place-making elements contribute to an amenity-rich environment attracting residents, visitors, and employees. So tonight, we're looking around, like, why are we doing this particular zoning text amendment? Staff anticipates that these amendments would continue the implementation of the vision that was laid out in the 2015 Arlington County Retail Plan, which encourages a retail environment that provides interesting and authentic entertainment and experiences. The Retail Plan calls for Arlington's shopping centers to increase place-making efforts, creating activity and attractions on the outside as well as the inside. It also encourages the county to allow for flexibility and creativity to accommodate complementary uses and draw in future customers. In considering this amendment, staff reviewed the changing nature of the retail experience and what attracts shoppers. From the mid-century through the mid-2000s, a lot of the retail was characterized by a shift from the walkable downtown districts to islands of retail surrounded by surface parking. And distant from any residential development. From the late 2000s through the present, there's been really a shift towards financially and environmentally sustainable places, such as mixed-use developments, which offer a combination of national and local shopping and dining options, where people can live, work, exercise, experience parks, entertainment, recreation, and even worship, all in one walkable location. Coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, there was an increased importance on the use of outdoor spaces, a public living room for social engagement. A 2023 Urban Land Institute report titled Successful Retail: How 14 Shopping Centers Are Thriving Today notes that the most successful retail centers are mixed-use and those that bring the community together via a variety of programmed activities and amenities, including movie nights and community gathering spaces. So this proposal would support the enhancement and economic viability of Arlington County's large retail establishments, our community shopping centers, and our urban regional shopping centers, by creating the opportunity to increase place-making through the addition of innovative digital elements to create an attractive environment that encourages gathering and socializing along with shopping, dining, and other retail activity. More specifically, the proposed amendments would rebrand large media screens, provide for an updated and expanded purpose, clarify the process, and with approval findings, use standards and modifications, provide for commercial messages, and define the medium to large commercial shopping centers in Arlington. So a little bit about this, the rebranding, in that we've revised the definition. We took the large media screen definition, we have updated it to outdoor visual entertainment. It is an automatic changeable copy sign larger than 12 square feet. Most importantly is to recognize that we are providing for live events, media broadcasts, animations, movies, or similar displays. So this is a change, and we've updated this definition throughout the zoning ordinance. We've updated the purpose, and we're to look at both the economic development and enhancing the long-term economic viability of our major commercial centers, fostering a sense of place, creating a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community, and really promoting the public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed amendment clarifies the current approval process. And the proposal before you tonight outlines how the county board may approve outdoor visual entertainment by use permit when it finds, or makes the following findings: that it's oriented, excuse me, for, oriented for viewing by pedestrians or retail customers, and placed in a location consistent with visions in our adopted county plans, where pedestrian activity is encouraged in a mixed-use setting; that it functions as an element separate and distinct from the building facade; that it doesn't unreasonably interfere with or create distraction to a driver's operation of a motor vehicle; and does not unreasonably impact the monumental core of the District of Columbia or other sites of historic or national interest. In this clarified process, we have also established use standards and modifications. There are six categories of use standards that the outdoor visual entertainment must comply with for the board to approve it. It evolves around the location and sighting of the outdoor visual entertainment, the sign area, the sign height, the messages that are contained, the lighting, and sound, and hours of operation. In this, you'll see there are stars and asterisks after a standard indicates that our county board may modify that use standard through its approval of the use permit. Of note, and I mentioned this previously, the proposed amendment removes the explicit prohibition of commercial messages from use standards for outdoor visual entertainment. So again, located in a community shopping center or an urban regional shopping center, these are to be wall signs. However, if an applicant can indicate that something better than a wall sign is appropriate, the county board may modify that. That it's not placed within 200 feet of the common lot line of an R and R district, it's placed on elevations of the building that immediately abut plazas, and doesn't substitute for fenestration on the building. The sign area would be no larger than 750 square feet, and that's not included in the aggregate sign area and can be approved by the county board independently of a comprehensive sign plan. The maximum sign height is to 40 feet to the top of the sign, and the sign height may also be regulated under regulations for urban regional shopping centers. Commercial messages are permitted. The lighting and the sound, they meet the standards that are already prescribed for automatic changeable copies, and with automatic level controls to reduce light levels at night and under cloudy or other darkened conditions, and that the sound should be permitted during the hours of operation, which are established and listed below. The county board has the ability to modify the hours of operation should the applicant apply for a special event permit. For example, World Cup is going on, and the hours are outside of these hours, the special event could be applied for, and the outdoor visual entertainment could be used during those special event hours. Further, in reviewing Arlington's larger retail properties for the potential placement of these outdoor visual entertainment, staff concluded that the urban regional shopping center definition didn't accommodate the medium to large retailer establishments in Arlington. Rather than decrease the 500,000-square-foot threshold for urban regional shopping centers, staff proposes a new definition for the community shopping center, and really looks at a building or portion of a building that includes a minimum gross floor area of 200,000 square feet of retail entertainment and food establishment uses. I just wanted to highlight our engagement. We did a public notice in accordance with the Code of Virginia. There was a work session early on, really talking about the broad CMRI 2.0, both to their county board, and then we did some briefings with the different commissions, including the Planning Commission. There's a request to advertise for this item, February 24. We met with ZOCO in April, and then we've had this posted, the zoning studies website, as well as a Commercial Market Resiliency webpage. So tonight, we're presenting to the Planning Commission in the hopes that you'll put forward a recommendation to the county board that they adopt the attached ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Articles 13 and 18, the Arlington County's zoning ordinance relating to replacing the large media screen, amending the definition of outdoor visual entertainment, amending and expanding the purpose, approval criteria, use standards, locations, and luminance of outdoor visual entertainment, including allowing commercial messages and sound, permitting modification of these use standards through the county board use permit approval, and that you will also be making other editorial changes for improved clarity and for other related reasons required by public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice. With that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hunger. There is no applicant, so do we have any public speakers on this item?
We do have one public speaker, and that is Mr. John Musso.
All right, the floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is John Musso, Government Affairs Manager at the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the chamber, I would like to ask the Planning Commission to please recommend the adoption of these amendments to the zoning ordinance that are before you tonight. The chamber has been a strong supporter of the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative ever since it was first devised several years ago. We feel it's a collection of very astute, common-sense policies that provide greater flexibility for the county and for businesses to most effectively meet the economic challenges that we were facing after the pandemic. As noted by Jill Hunger in her presentation, this one specific ordinance is just part of a whole, but it would go a long way in creating a more flexible and vibrant element of place-making for not just our central districts, but for all of our neighborhoods in Arlington who'd be able to take advantage of this. So we kindly request you to please recommend the ordinance that's before you, and also to continue to support the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative as we move on to other phases of that the other coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public speakers. The item is now, we don't have any commissions that wish to be heard, other?
None that are signed up to speak.
Okay. The item is now with Planning Commission. I believe this was heard by ZOCO?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it came before ZOCO in April, as Ms. Hunger mentioned. We spent quite a bit of time talking about it. Mostly, we were trying to understand what it is. And so it was, you know, I think, so there's not much discussion. I think staff's proposal is fairly conservative and respectful of the R zoning and the, you know, sort of light pollution and noise pollution issues. But I think, you know, it's not too much of a controversial or too many issues to discuss, other than if there's any questions or comments. I'm glad staff's here. But that's what we did at the ZOCO.
Thank you for that report. Other, understanding that this is a fairly non-controversial item, I don't believe there's any topics you wish to propose for discourse. So at this point, we'll have open discussion. Are there any questions among the planning commissioners on this item? Yes, Commissioner Begley?
Again, to compliment staff on continuing to find ways to improve our commercial resiliency. But I'm assuming, because there aren't too many of these in existence now, that this is something that somebody can ask for. So I guess, what is the process to get this? This is a site plan amendment, but again, it depends on how the area was approved, I'm going to guess. So what is the process?
Certainly. So for our, the urban regional shopping centers, so that's Boston Border and Fashion Center of Pentagon City, and our commercial shopping centers, or community commercial shopping centers, which are four of them, that includes the Village of Sherlington, and includes Common Clarendon, it includes, forgetting off the top of my head, they're listed in our staff report, I'll find that shortly. They can all have these via a use permit. So they would apply for a use permit, it would go to the county board, and as I pointed out, there are criteria that they would make the findings, that if the proposal met those findings, you know, if they found that they met all of that, then they would apply the use standards. And the use standards are also spelled out. Some of those use standards can be modified. So again, the county board would establish conditions associated with that, and the outdoor visual entertainment would be approved.
So a follow-up to that would be, because in a lot of these places, it is mixed-use, and there are residents, obviously. and there are residents, obviously, would, is there at that point, before it goes to the county board, would there be community involvement, or would it be reaching out to the stakeholders in the community? I mean, it just isn't passing through the night or something, right?
Certainly. And Mr. Pfeiffer can probably, can wax poetic on our use permit process, but typically what will happen is an applicant would apply for the use permit. The application is received by county staff, and it is disseminated to the civic associations, depending on the location, if there are owners associations or others in that general vicinity also there. So you're right, like at the Village of Sherlington. And we would also, you know, typically we coordinate and we ask the applicant to have that interaction as well. So yes, there's a process, and then there would be a public hearing as well.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Striner?
And so on that thread of outreach, I mean, are these, are the businesses involved here? Are the owners of these properties, are they aware of this sort of change, or are we just going to pass this and then no one will know about it, that kind of thing?
Sure. So the genesis for this particular amendment started with Fritt in looking at West Post, and they pivoted and are looking actually at the Village of Sherlington. So right there, sort of two are captured. Boston Quarter had looked at it previously and sort of contacts with others. I think the big change here is allowing and accommodating some commercial speech and allowing for these modifications that it can occur to.
Got it. Okay. So they're in the loop, too. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'm looking for a motion, and I'm looking at Commissioner Sarley for that motion. Thank you.
So I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board amend, reenact, and recodify Articles 7, 14, and 18 of the Arlington County zoning ordinance as set forth in Attachment 2 of the staff report to A, amend, how do you pronounce that little squiggle?
Like that.
What's it called again? B, for revision to off-site parking standards. B, delete Section 14.3.6. B for consistency with amendment Section 14.3.3B. C, amend the reference in Section 7.8.5 for consistency with amendment of Section 14.3.3B. D, amend Section 18.2 to amend a definition for neighborhood commercial centers. And E, amend Section 14.3 to establish parking standards for neighborhood commercial centers. And F, make other editorial changes for improved clarity and, I believe so, this is 222. Oh, no, it's the wrong one.
Yeah, sorry.
I stepped back. I was doing, well, you know, we did 2023-2 second and 2023-3 first, so I'm just a little confused. My bad. Thanks for catching that, Commissioner Burkey. I will start again.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I want to make sure we're good on the notice here. Okay, good.
Yeah, Commissioner Burkey's actually paying attention, so thank you.
I'm guessing where you were in the motion.
The other commissioners are on notice. All right, enough. I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board amend, reenact, and recodify Articles 13 and 18 of the Arlington County zoning ordinance as set forth in Attachment 1 of the staff report to A, replace large media screen with outdoor visual entertainment throughout the zoning ordinance, amend the definition of outdoor visual entertainment to include live events, movies, or similar displays, and incorporate a new definition for commercial shipping shopping centers in Article 18 definitions. B, amend and expand the purposes, approval, criteria, use standards, locations, and luminances of outdoor visual entertainment, including allowing commercial messages and sound. C, permit modifications of outdoor visual entertainment use standards through county board use permit approval for certain use standards, including minimum distance from an R or R A zoning district, maximum sign area, maximum sign height, sign type, and hours of operation, and make other, D, make other editorial changes for improved clarity and for other reasons required by public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Commissioner Striner will second. Any further discussion? I believe we've covered this. Okay, we will move to a vote. Commissioner Striner?
That's an aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantelme?
Aye.
Commissioner Gavara? Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
I believe virtually we have Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And Commissioner Patel? Commissioner Patel, are you present and voting? Okay, Commissioner Patel's not voting. Commissioner Steinberger votes aye. The motion passes nine to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Clerk, could you call our next item for this evening? Thank you.
Yes, the next item is item number five, Z O A dash 2024 dash zero two, an ordinance relating to off-site parking. And we have Val Weiner, who will give a presentation from AED.
When you're ready, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I had voted aye, but first, I didn't realize I needed to press star six because all this time I've just been listening to the instructions but not actually receiving them. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. Mr. Clerk, are we able to accept that vote or just better next time?
I think unfortunately, we're not able to accept the vote.
Okay.
But we can reflect for the record that while she didn't vote, she does support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. We appreciate that you are present, and we apologize we cannot accept your vote for the prior motion, but it will be reflected in the notes, the meeting minutes rather. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, members of the planning commission. I'm back to present CMRI parking updates to the zoning ordinance that were deferred from last month's agenda. Thank you for preemptively approving the motion. My name is Val Weiner from Arlington Economic Development. The following proposal has been put together with input from the Department of Environmental Services, the Planning and Zoning Divisions of the Community Planning Housing and Development Department, as well as feedback from the Transportation Commission and the Zoning Committee. I've also, I apologize, had some bad allergies, so I may cough a couple times. Preemptively apologize for that. I'll go quickly through CMRI context, since you just heard that, and the existing byright parking regulations, since you heard that last month, and spend the majority of the time on the proposed regulations for onsite shared parking and off-site parking. Building off of Jill's previous presentation, I'd mainly like to emphasize that we've been tasked by the county manager and the county board to take big swings, some of which we know we will have to monitor and update as needed, but the overall goal is to try new things that we think will help support businesses and attract office tenants in an unstable market, and then we can make updates based on market reactions. As mentioned, CMRI has many goals, including balancing the residential commercial split in the tax base, which lessens the burden on residential taxpayers, but these swings relate specifically to CMRI's goals for services and placemaking. These regulations support CMRI's both short and long-term goals for services and placemaking in that in the short term, commercial businesses create a unique sense of place that gives Arlington a competitive edge in the office market. Interesting retail and restaurants, even nearby medical office, can be market attractors for new office users. They also provide critical amenities for residential tenants as well. Supporting these businesses is therefore a critical piece of CMRI's overall plan to support office and retail markets. So in the short term, these regulations support small businesses by streamlining existing processes, creating new regulatory processes that help businesses avoid having to minimize gross floor area or find new locations, and clarify a confusing process that helps give a business more security when signing a lease. In the long term, these proposals are intermediary steps toward rethinking the county's parking regulations as a whole. The value of this for CMRI is minimizing the direct cost of parking for a business while also being able to find the highest and best use of parking spaces, which can include but is not limited to new business development. We recognize that there are risks involved with taking steps toward these larger changes, but these risks will also produce data we can use to inform updates in the future. In the meantime, the goal is to support a business's ability to provide goods and services that we need in our community and create an interesting sense of place to attract new office tenants. This slide outlines how we currently regulate byright parking in the county, which is by minimums. These minimums have inconsistent measurements, and many haven't been assessed or changed since their establishment decades ago. As mentioned, the impact of this approach is that the minimum requirements can stifle a business's ability to maximize available gross floor area in a given space, or force them to find new space, because in a byright situation, you are limited by the size of the existing building and what parking is left in the existing parking lot. In the case of onsite shared parking, these minimums can be especially mismatched because of how the lots are used. In most cases, the retail strips or strip malls associated with shared lots have a mix of uses that complement each other's hours of operation or hours of peak demand. A med spa versus a restaurant, for example, have different peak demand times, and the shift is not reflected in the county's existing minimums approach, as both could share the same parking on a lot or on a given site. Other jurisdictions around us are moving toward removing minimums entirely. Charlottesville and Richmond have removed minimums throughout their jurisdictions in purchase support commercial enterprise, and Fairfax County has also recently restructured its parking ordinance to move in that direction as well. We were asked by the Transportation Commission to investigate how long it took each of those jurisdictions to remove minimums. We preliminarily found it took them each about seven years to get to fully abolishing minimums. There is an opportunity with shared onsite parking to take an iterative step in that direction by establishing a new path for developments with shared parking lots to be regulated based on use, not minimums. There are three components to this proposal. The first, introducing a new use of a neighborhood commercial center. Second is a new parking ratio for that use, and the third is the ability to modify that ratio via use permit. Introducing a new use makes it easier for staff to administer the code for these development types, which are right now undefined. We landed on this definition in order to be as inclusive of as many byright neighborhood commercial centers as possible, while allowing staff discretion on the extent and boundaries of the center. This resulted in up to but not including 200,000 square feet of gross floor area, requiring multiple commercial indoor retail tenants, highlighting that there is no residential floor area, as mixed use projects are not part of the scope of this proposal, and most importantly, the shared lot. This proposal also includes a proposed ratio of one parking space per 600 square feet of gross floor area for a neighborhood commercial center. This ratio is progressive. It decreases the parking minimum for something like a general retail or service commercial use, which is one parking space per 250 square feet of gross floor area by two and a half. Another example, restaurants will go from being regulated by one space per six seats to being regulated by one parking space per 600 gross floor area for the entire neighborhood commercial center, not just their singular retail bay. While we discussed and tested multiple ratios, staff found that this ratio is a first step toward testing the market reaction to a more relaxed parking regulation. We did refer to the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking demand data and a small sample of existing neighborhood commercial centers that both indicated that one per 600 is within the range of demand for these development types, as well as a progressive test for some of our existing sites that we have today. We also proposed the option to modify this ratio via use permit, recognizing that there are some sites with parking ratios much less than one space per 600 square feet of gross floor area. That means they have less existing parking. This option includes criteria such as transportation demand. Okay, so this.
I think, I think we're in good shape.
Good shape? Okay, thank you. So the, the use permit option includes criteria such as transportation demand management strategies like transit information displays, a property transportation coordinator, and/or the most likely option, a submission of a shared parking plan that outlines the, how demand shifts between the uses. As previously mentioned, there are items to monitor with this proposal. For example, we plan to monitor how this approach will work when the neighborhood commercial center is under different ownership, as well as how this ordinance interplays with byright outdoor cafes. Staff anticipated that these two items would arise as we move forward with the discussion of removing parking minimums regardless, so this data, or these data on outcomes and impacts of this regulation will be helpful as we continue to work through future updates. We're also working with zoning on how to create a more formal reporting process when these applications come in for us to be notified. For off-site parking, there are limited opportunities for commercial business to pursue off-site parking as it currently stands in the zoning ordinance by right. This is, yeah, I could. I think that would be good for me and you and everyone listening. Yep, I'm just going to take a breath. Yep. Thank you. I appreciate that. Breathing is encouraged. Okay. Just let me know if I start up again and, and yeah. And I'm happy to also go back to any slide and talk in more detail. We'll pace. Okay. My apologies. Okay. For off-site parking, there are limited opportunities for a commercial business to pursue off-sighting required spaces as it currently stands in the zoning ordinance. This is different than the case of a neighborhood commercial center. The model case here is where there is a single business on a lot with limited parking, and there is a garage with available excess parking nearby. Other Virginia jurisdictions offer off-site parking agreements by right or via use permit that includes a parking study. The opportunity here is to expand our existing regulations to offer more opportunities for off-sighting required parking in order to support filling vacant commercial spaces, a business's ability to maximize gross floor area, and maximize available nearby parking, therefore creating the highest and best use of that space. For off-site parking, we are proposing essentially two paths, a byright and a use permit path. The byright path keeps the existing regulation in place in that it is byright if the same entity owns the on and off-site spaces, but we propose we expand the distance between the use and the off-site spaces from 600 feet to a quarter mile, it's 1,320 feet, and as well as disallowing off-site parking, off-sighting of parking for the purpose of byright outdoor cafes. Staff felt that the outdoor cafe component needs to be monitored and addressed separately, just as it will be monitored with the onsite shared parking as well. As it exists currently, applicants will have to show that the physical conditions of the site presents obstacles to providing all required parking onsite, and staff has the capacity to reject a byright application if it cannot sufficiently show that need. There will also be a use permit option for off-site parking where there are two different owners in the on and off-site spaces. The use permit will include the same safety standards as the byright option, as well as the requirement to justify the request for off-site parking. Additional criteria includes that all sites be located within Arlington County. This was for enforcement and legal reasons. The same prohibition on off-sighting spaces for outdoor cafes. A requirement that the off-site parking is more than and/or does not conflict with the parking required for the uses on the off-site property. So essentially, it needs to be excess parking for the off-site property, as well as the existence of an agreement. The agreement is between the business requesting the spaces with approval and sign off of the onsite owner and the owner of the off-site spaces. We list baseline criteria in the proposal that we took from neighboring jurisdictions agreements, as well as language that already existed in the zoning ordinance for similar agreements. We've also created a draft template with the county attorney's office that we can share with applicants once it's ready to help move the process forward if they haven't had experience working with agreements before. And the review and renewal period associated with the use permit allows additional opportunity to add additional conditions. With this item, we primarily aim to monitor whether the use permit criteria is too onerous for the business to even attempt, which we can adjust later based on outcomes data, as well as tracking enforcement of the discontinuance of an agreement and how this ordinance interplays with outdoor cafes similar to onsite shared parking. We have hypotheses on what may happen, but we won't know until there are some real examples in the county that we can point to and use as case studies for future work. We're aware of the risks, but we're excited about how this information could help the county continue to support placemaking and services as part of CMRI. This item was RTA'd in February for April action and deferred to May. In that time, we presented to the zoning committee in March, and we presented to the Transportation Commission in February and May. The commission voted to approve staff's recommendation at their May meeting with the caveat that we explore how long it took other jurisdictions to remove parking minimums, which again was about seven years. to remove parking minimums, which again was about seven years for Richmond and Charlottesville, and a recommendation for the county board to direct the county manager to provide a date by which staff will recommend abolishing parking minimums. We also presented to the EDC office vacancy working group, and we will brief them at their meeting on Tuesday as well. And we present the following recommendation for your consideration.
Do you have any public speakers on this item?
We do, Madam Chair. We have two public speakers, one of whom is joining us virtually. And we will go to him first. Jim Rosen, are you with us?
I am, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Great, good evening. So I'm here on behalf of the Boston, Virginia Square Civic Association to suggest some changes to the proposed zoning amendment as detailed in the letter that we sent to the commissioners today. First, our kudos to the Arlington Economic Development Team for engaging well with us on this issue. As we look more closely at the details of the proposal, however, some concerns arose. First, we feel that the proposed changes are too broad. They do not consider unexpected possible negative scenarios where non-commercial entities own and use CM or P zone properties, including for noxious uses. For example, the company's staff report did not examine scenarios involving the Arlington County Board and Arlington Public Schools, among the largest landowners in Arlington, and also with many contiguous properties. We thus think it's reasonable to request that the proposed amendment sharpen its focus on commercial resiliency and that section 14.3, 3B include explicit language that these proposed changes do not apply to government uses of facilities, except for school facilities where the primary use is student instruction. Second, the ordinance should include language that prevents property owners from reducing parking on their site for other slash additional uses. For example, simply to transfer the parking requirement to a different site. And finally, for parking authorized under this amendment, the ordinance should require a minimum of 10% operable level to EV chargers. That is one charger per 10 parking spaces at the primary business site. We feel that the proposed amendment gives landowners additional value and in exchange, they should be required to modestly support Arlington's environmental goals. We hope that you act on these requests, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next public speaker?
Okay, our next speaker is John Musso.
Welcome back.
Good evening again, members of the Planning Commission. John Musso, Government Affairs Manager at the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. I won't belabor the point of the market resiliency initiative too much, but just to give some specific remarks about the ordinance that is before you, which we ask that you please support. The chamber very strongly supports any effort to provide greater opportunities to businesses and property owners to adapt their businesses in the context in which makes the most sense for their businesses and for their clientele. As noted in the presentation, a lot of parking regulation that are currently on the books in Arlington do not reflect the kind of dense environment that so much of this county is today and also tends to be inconsistent and confusing for business and property owners to digest and fully enact. So we believe that the ordinance that is before you, these zoning ordinance amendments are really a tremendous step in the right direction in terms of providing greater flexibility for business and property owners and allowing these businesses to move into a place where parking requirements can be based on what the market demands and not necessarily what a several decade old ordinance would say. So thank you very much for your time, and we ask that you please recommend adoption. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Musso. I believe that's all of our public speakers?
That is all of them.
Okay, and I'm guessing there are no other commissions here who wish to be heard? Okay, I'm thinking Zoco heard this?
Yes.
And Transportation. Okay, so we'll hear from Zoco then Transportation. Thank you.
As Zoco heard this on March 12th, I believe. This, I have to confess, this is a little bit of a, of a nut to crack. There's a lot of sort of iterations and possibilities here, but inherently, I think this is a good thing. And it mostly comes down to allowing for certain types of uses. And Valerie, correct me if I'm, if I'm out of line here. Allowing for certain types of uses that are burdened with too much parking, essentially to share parking or accommodate parking via different methods. But anyhow, at the conversation at the Zoco, you know, we all asked questions, we all commented, and it was general approval or consensus that this is a great thing to do and continue with the CMRI. I think this is part of the 2.0 CMRI, you know, and, and just keep pushing ahead. So generally, there's support for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lantelme with a report for Transportation.
Thank you, yes. This was heard at last week's Transportation Commission meeting. The discussion was very favorable toward doing this, very much approved of both the initiative and, and where it is going. If anything, the commission really wanted the CMRI to be more aggressive and would, would recommend going even further by getting rid of parking minimums entirely for commercial uses. It followed up by making a motion that the Transit Commission is recommending that the county board direct the county manager to determine a specific timeline for the ultimate abolition of parking minimums in the zoning ordinance. Both the motion, the amendment and the main motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. I don't believe any other subcommittees of the Planning Commission heard this item. Okay, are there any suggested discussion topics from either Transportation or Zoco for this group? Okay, then we will have an open discussion on that. I will recognize myself first because I did have, we did receive the letter from the Boston, Virginia Square Civic Association earlier today. And I did want to pull the thread a little bit on the ability to sort of, or is there ability to kind of transfer parking rights in the way that the BVSEA is concerned? That, you know, simply to say, well, I won't use my parking here and an owner could, you know, simply use it the way you can, you know, transfer height rates, or we've seen that. And I, that wasn't what I, my takeaway from before, so I wanted to understand that better.
That is not the intention of this proposal. You will have to, when you come forward with an application, you will have to show that there is a need to offsite your required parking. So you can't arbitrarily transfer your required parking elsewhere just because you are a commercial use in one of the approved districts. So that, that is not. As my understanding, and granted, I haven't, we also received the letter today, so I haven't had as much time to deep dive into that request. But the intention of this is to provide a solution to cases where there is not adequate parking onsite for a use that is trying to lease space on that site. So if I, if I understood the request, it was, if a use, or if a owner were to purchase space near metro, they could offsite some of their parking. I think that, that case that was provided is a little more complicated in that there are also exclusions for required parking near metro. So there are a number of, of other components of the ordinance at play. So I don't, I don't know, in terms of the phrase like transfer parking, I don't think that that is what we're talking about here. But there are a number of exclusions in the ordinance that are already provided outside of what we're talking about here today that already exist.
Commissioner Strider, and then Commissioner Burkey?
Yeah, so I also want to pull on some threads from the Boston, Virginia Square letter. That EV requirement is something that's interesting to me because not only do I think it accomplishes a sustainability goal, it's also sort of adapting to the, the market of car purchases in the future. And is there any way we can insert a provision about making a certain percentage of those EV accessible?
So I spoke with my DES counterpart, Mosse London, who could not make it tonight, earlier today about this. And he mentioned that from the DES perspective, there isn't the EV infrastructure there yet on the private parking side to the point where that requirement would actually be detrimental to the business and more expensive and possibly even prohibitive to them taking advantage of this option at this time. So that doesn't prevent us from doing it in the future. But this is, again, one of those intermediary steps that we are committing to monitoring over time and honing to make it exactly what we want it to be as we move forward.
So maybe not right away, but over time, we've left the door open for that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, hi, thank you.
Yeah, so related to the letter from Boston, Virginia Square with regards to the EV chargers. So I've been on the Planning Commission for a year, I was looking at the calendar. And in that time, but before then even, you know, I was familiar with site plans where we look at EV chargers, you know, with residential housing that's coming online. But do, does the county require that type of infrastructure in any commercial centers and, at all? You know, do we have that requirement?
I'm gonna throw it to Matt.
Thank you, Matt Fiver with the Planning Division for the record. I can, I can take this one, Eric. So for in, in site plans that participate in the green building incentive program, there is a requirement for 4% of all of the spaces to be EV charger ready. Or 15% EV charger ready and 4% with chargers actually at the spaces.
Okay.
That's, those are our requirements at the moment. Other than that, we have no requirements.
Sure, and typically in those site plans, we're talking about a lot of housing typically being a part of that. And so from, you know, an economy standpoint, you know, EV chargers for housing for folks who are going to live there, just thinking out loud here, that sort of makes sense. I, I share maybe DES's concern about if these are commercial spaces for requirement infrastructure from a cost perspective. But also, while I share the sentiments of the Civic Association about leaning into our environmental goals, I think really the intent of what staff is proposing here is actually supporting those goals by trying to allow businesses to have less parking, to better, you know, have more flexibility to better suit their needs, the neighborhoods they're in. And in my opinion, we're going to get so much more benefit environmentally if we can have a dentist or a fitness center or one of these smaller businesses be able to locate in your neighborhood and you could walk to it or you could bike to it, right? And you don't always have to drive a car. And so I feel like the county really should be taking that approach as opposed to worrying where every EV car is going to park. And so I would not support amending it at this time. And it sounds like staff would not either. Thank you.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. And again, anything that we can do to help our business community, I think most of us are for. So you said it's not the intention of this proposal to apply to government uses and facilities, but does that mean it will not, or it still can? Or just for the clarification?
I apologize, I was speaking to the, I think it's the second item on the letter, the, the transfer of parking. So for the government facilities, I think an important distinction is the zoning ordinance regulates land uses. So when we're talking about government facilities, according to the ordinance, what government facilities include detention or correctional centers, emergency medical and ambulance stations, fire police stations, post office, maintenance and repair garages, storage areas, yards and warehouses, and public transit facilities. So it's not based on ownership, it's based on the actual land use. And we felt at the time that based on sort of the taking a big swing that these uses should be able to take advantage of this opportunity doesn't mean that they will, or it's within their business model for a fire or police station to offsite their parking. All that's, all this does is say that the door is open.
Okay. Next question is, so where it specifically mentions here in C, mixed use Virginia Square District site. Is that all of Virginia Square or just specific parts of Virginia Square?
So that is a very small district that, in the zoning ordinance, has a provision that was referring to a section that allowed restaurants to pursue offsite parking agreements. We've basically replaced that with our new and improved, hopefully, larger ordinance that allows more than just restaurants to pursue offsite parking. So we just updated that language from, I think it's 4. something B to the correct.
So other businesses in this area already would already be covered by this, correct?
Under this change.
Under the change.
Yeah, under the change they would be.
I just, yeah. And then, so I'm assuming the way this comes up is if there's two businesses in that area and they've concluded that there is parking advantages together, that they apply for a use permit?
The applicant would be the business that requires the parking. And it would be contingent upon an agreement with an offsite owner. And usually, you know, there are additional barriers outside of this requirement. Like most of the time, these spaces aren't free. So that's another component that is decided by the market. But this option allows them to come forward to us if they can get through those sort of outside hurdles.
Okay, so as we heard in the previous item, so the use permit would go to the county board, but there would be a process for the neighbors and things like that, or the Civic Association to be a part of, correct?
And that is if there are different owners between the on and the offsite spaces, which is the more common.
Usually typical. And so is that an annual use permit? So in other words, should there have arisen, you know, if there are problems or whatever, problems are being reported or whatever. So is that annually reviewed? Because I know a lot of use permits are.
I think, I'll defer to Matt. I think that's determined in the use permit approval process, but I'll defer to Matt.
That's exactly right, Val. So that would be determined on a case by case basis. We do have kind of standards for various types of uses. Typically, our, our standard for like, let's say, live entertainment uses is we put it on a one-year, three-year, five-year, and then no further review, review cycle. But that can be determined, you know, if issues arise during the review, we can recommend a shorter review period.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lantelme, then Commissioner Sarley.
Thank you, yeah. I just wanted to associate myself with Commissioner Burkey's comments on the EVs. These, most of these, most of the retail centers that are covered by this are very old. A lot of them go back, some of them may go back to the 1930s. They're just simply not set up for, for EVs. And it may even be cost prohibitive. It may be that you just abandon the center rather than have to go through something like that. So these are two separate issues. And I understand the desire to include it in, but we really need to separate EVs from this particular parking initiative. We've heard too many small businesses that are stymied by the Byzantine parking rules that we have in the zoning ordinance right now. They're very complicated and they no longer have any basis in reality. The numbers are almost pulled out of, out of air. So what we're doing now is rationalizing our parking rules. It'll make it much easier for a small business to decide whether they in fact can rent that space, that the parking would be there for them. And they wouldn't be prohibited because we have run into situations where someone has signed a lease and it turns out they can't use it because the parking isn't there under the use that they want to do, even though they thought they could. Because somebody else in the center had already used up the parking. And it's very difficult to figure that out if you're going in and looking for a lease. So this overall is a, is a very, very much needed change to the zoning ordinance. And I absolutely salute staff for what they've done. It's great. So, you know, I'm supporting moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, I agree with Commissioner Lantelme that this is a, this is a very good move because I think there's a, it becomes prohibitive, right? If you simply don't have the parking, you simply don't have the parking and that's that. So I think that's a huge hurdle to remove. To quickly react to the EV thing, I also am very intrigued by this. My take on it is we're trying to remove hurdles right now. It doesn't make sense to put one back on. So I'm generally agreeing with it. On the flip side, I think, you know, even like Level 2, which are typical sort of household sort of charging stations, you know, are, are just good. And I think it wouldn't hurt and it wouldn't be that onerous. But I agree with my fellow commissioners that, you know, this is probably not the venue or the, the situation to do it. To talk a little bit about the, the letter and the, so their concern essentially is, I think it's called the Buck Site. And essentially, if that site then off, offset, you know, parks offsite and then they can use that site, they can park on the, on the parking garage over 66 and then that frees up space for like laying down materials, storing salt, working tractor equipment. And I think that would just be a little bit of an irritant to the neighbors and the neighborhood. So I think that's specifically their concern. So my question to staff is, is that something, first of all, that could happen? If we look at the situation, could essentially, I guess that's a DES site, right? Could they essentially say, we're going to park, all our park over on the excess parking at the school parking and use this site for these sort of unwanted uses? and use this site for these sort of unwanted uses from the neighbor's perspective?
I would have to get back to you. I haven't done analysis specifically on that site. What I will say is that my understanding is that they would have to go through the same process that we've set forward and have to show justification for doing so. And if that justification was to the satisfaction of the staff in the buy rate process or to the board in the use permit process and the community through that, then it would move forward. But I have not done specific research on that site.
Thanks. And then just, you know, my personal context on this, I think some of you recall a few years ago, we had a APS application that broke with all of the rules, right? That we had for the thing. So that's, I think, a little bit where that concern is coming from is sometimes we sort of feel like we can sort of play by different rules than everyone else. And so this ironically, this is almost going the other way. It's saying like, you're not allowed to play by the rules that everyone gets to play. But nonetheless, I thought it was an interesting comment and I appreciate very much the Civic Association diving deep into this and giving us something to talk about. Thank you.
Commissioner Sarley, I think I can address a part of your question. So if you, if you read the draft ordinance, the purpose of the off-site parking is to accommodate for if parking, if required parking cannot fit on a specific site, then it could be located off-site subject to provisions that are recommended. So in, I think the Buck Site case, if they have the physical room to fit all of their required parking, they could not then off-site that parking for the purposes of, you know, doing what you said, lay down or whatever. It really, really the intent of this is for, if there were physical constraints or other constraints to where required parking cannot be physically accommodated on the site. It's, what it's not is a proposal to allow users to off-site their parking, even if they can fit all that parking on their site, to do other types of uses.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Burkey?
A follow-up to that then. I, I'm just, so that makes sense, but I'm still not following this thread of if the intent of all this is for our, you know, for our small businesses, for our commercial partners, then even if that's true, why could hypothetically APS or even the county itself still be able to at least attempt to do that here? Why couldn't, why couldn't, you know, the Civic Association is just saying basically, you know, bar, you know, bar this for government uses, period, this recommendation. Why, why couldn't we just take that approach that what the Civic Association is recommending?
I suppose, well.
Go ahead, Val.
I, I mean, I, I think, I suppose you could, but I think what, you know, Val is presenting tonight is that we've said that, you know, we, we wanted this flexibility for any of the uses that were included in C, M, or P districts.
I'm, I'm just thinking about it. I, I'll confess, I, you know, I've, I've been in several situations with both APS as well as the county itself not complying properly with use permit processes. They weren't enjoyable, and they didn't have to do with, with parking. But that does give me some pause, to be, to be candid. Thank you.
I would like to interject and suggest that Commissioner Burkey is welcome to make a motion to that effect, should he wish to make an amending motion this evening. Should Commissioner Burkey be inclined to make that motion, you might find some support from other commissioners. So draft some language if you're so inclined. Thank you. Commissioner Sarley?
So I'll react to that a little bit. I probably wouldn't vote for that motion because of the anecdote that I used earlier on. I would have loved to have told APS, you can park offsite, which they were doing to begin with, which that whole story is a bad one. But the point being, I'd love to have the opportunity for like schools and/or government facilities that are in dense areas that, you know, don't have sufficient parking to be able to off-site parking, you know, and use the tool as it's intended for, you know, a civic use. So I, I, I think it's okay, right? I just think, and, and I'm somewhat assuaged by the, the, the analysis that this needs to, you have to demonstrate the need before you can go ahead and do something. And I think that would prevent something like the Buck property from abusing that. And I, I think where I disagree is I think I'd love to have like, you know, the Heights School be able to off-site park, which they did, and keep it that way.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme would like to be recognized.
Right. I'd like to follow on because I agree with Commissioner Sarley. The Heights, for example, does use off-site parking quite extensively. It's an important and very good use of the overparked buildings we have in Roslyn that rather than building more parking, we're using the existing parking that's right there in the neighborhood. So when we're dealing with schools that are in the corridors, shared parking is a great thing to do. And we should be doing more of it. We should always be looking for where we have overparked situations to be able to find a use for that rather than building more parking, which is insanely expensive and it ends up being just a waste of money. So I would not be in favor of limiting any government entity from finding a use for shared parking.
Okay. Commissioner Striner, and then Commissioner Burkey wants to recognize one more time, and then I'd like to move us on. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to associate myself with Commissioner Sarley and Lynn Tellme as well. I would not support it because if the spirit of this is to remove restrictions, you know, we shouldn't be adding more. And then if this is a experimental sort of, we'll, we'll kind of do this for a little bit. We'll, we'll observe what's happening and then make some adjustments. If we find that the county and APS is abusing this sort of system, then we can go in later and tighten it up. But for now, and if it's still in this exploratory phase, you know, no need to cancel them out of this, in my opinion.
Commissioner Burkey?
Yeah, no, I'd just like to note, I don't plan on, on making a motion to amend the main motion. I, I appreciate this conversation. I think my fellow commissioners have made excellent points. Glad that we raised this as an issue that certainly will come up again when it comes before the county board. So I'll, I will be happy to support the main motion when it is made. Thanks.
Okay. Any other final comments from the commission? I don't see any virtual hands raised, so I don't believe our virtual commissioners have anything to add at this juncture. Okay, then I am looking for a motion. I'm going to look to Commissioner Sarley to do the motion. I think you started to do the first time, but now you can do it for real.
And now let me double check, make sure I'm reading the correct one this time. Okay. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board amend, reenact, and recodify Articles 7, 14, and 18 of the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance as set forth in Attachment 2 of the Staff Report to A, amend Section 14, 3.3. B for revisions to off-site parking standards; B, delete Section 14.3.6. B for consistency with amended Section 14.3.3. B; C, amend the reference in Section 7.8.5 for consistency with amended Section 14.3.3. B; and D, amend 18, Section 18.2 to add a definition for neighborhood commercial centers; E, amend Section 14.3 to establish parking standards for neighborhood commercial centers; and F, make other editorial changes for improved clarity and for other related reasons required by public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Striner will second. Any further discussion among the commission? Okay, we will move to a vote. Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Commissioner Gavara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel? Commissioner Patel, do you need to unmute?
Aye. No, I, delay, sorry, aye.
That's an aye. Okay. Commissioner Steinberger votes aye as well. The motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe there is a third item for this evening, but there's plot twist, so take it away, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Indeed, there is a, a third item. This is item number six on the agenda. PLA 23-00021, PDSP number 105. This is a phased development site plan amendment to amend the Pentagon City phased development site plan for a portion, portion of parcel 1C. So normally this would be the time where I transferred over to the staff to give a presentation. In this case, we wanted to provide an update on some late-breaking actions that occurred yesterday. So as many of you know, the Virginia Court of Appeals made a ruling yesterday afternoon that did a, a few things. There's some good news and some bad news, so I'll start with the good news. The Court of Appeals did confirm that the February 2022 adoption of the Pentagon City Sector Plan and the associated zoning, GLUP and MTP amendments were properly certified by the Planning Commission and satisfied the uniformity requirements of Virginia, of the Virginia Code, which is one of the counts in the suit that was brought against the county. However, the bad news is that the Court, the Court of Appeals found that the descriptive summary language in the public notice, which was at the time a requirement in the state code, the, the public notice for the actions associated with the Pentagon City Sector Plan was insufficient in detail. Therefore, the court did void the county board's actions involving the Pentagon City Sector Plan. So that includes the adoption of the plan itself, and again, the zoning, GLUP, and MTP amendments. So those are now void. This time, the county is thoroughly reviewing the court's decision. Again, we, this, this just came down to us yesterday, and we are looking at how to cure the procedural defect. Therefore, the applicant, through several conversations, is requesting to defer this item for an indefinite period of time until we can figure out how to cure this procedural defect. Staff is in agreement with the applicant's deferral, and therefore we have no presentation. And that is what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. With that in mind, I will make a motion to the effect of what Mr. Pfeiffer just addressed. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board defer the request for a phased development site plan, PDSP amendment to amend the Pentagon City PDSP for a portion of parcel 1C.
Second.
I think Commissioner Sarley beat you. Thank you very much for the second, Commissioner Sarley. I don't believe there's really room for kind of discussion on this item at this point if we're going to be deferring it. I think everyone understands the situation and it's evolving situation. And so with that in mind, we will move to a vote. One second. Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Commissioner Gavara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger, aye. The deferral motion passes 10-0. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, I believe that was our last item for this evening.
That was the last item.
Okay. With that in mind, we appreciate everyone's time and attention. We're getting out a little earlier this evening than on Monday, and I appreciate all of you, so thanks. Have a good night. and I appreciate all of you. So thanks. Have a good night.